... happiness, which is critical on my own. For the things to take a breath, I can't breathe, sunlight, steam, sunshine, this one of us, true. We ask for all the Chipmunks in this callers, we work together to make this city and even greater. We like it up, we inspire, we like it up, we inspire. Each beat of passion, each comment, each motion, when you do that, I will be so happy to do it. You know, it doesn't have to be.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Creekmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwan.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Commissioner Goodman.
Here.
Commissioner Hicks.
Commissioner Steller.
Here.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Here.
And Chairman Singleton.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any corrections of the minutes of the July meeting in addition to the correction that we had on that one typo? Is any other changes? Is that the case, they were stand as presented? This afternoon, we have three items on the agenda for public hearings. Public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal by the proponents. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item on our agenda today is conditional use permit request CUP 2022-016, Dees Little Dean Daycare. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. This is conditional use permit request CUP 2022-016, Dees Little Dean Daycare, submitted by Detrice Rab Green, Dees Little Dean Daycare applicant and property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a daycare family day home, five to 12 children, on property located at 6205 Old Town Point Road, zoning map 6A4, parcel four. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Nansman Voting Borough, zoned RC, residential compact zoning district. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area, Mixed Use Core Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2022-016. Staff Planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, the CUP is to establish a family day home on property located at 6205 Town Point Road. The property up for discussion is located in the Northern Growth Area, the Mixed Use Court, Mixed Use District, sorry. The subject property and all surrounding properties are zoned RC, residential compact zoning district, with some RM, residential medium zoning district, located to the south. The applicant is proposing to utilize the existing home as a family day home to provide care for up to 12 children. The applicant has been operating a daycare since 2008 in this location for up to four children within the existing two-story dwelling as permitted by right in the RC zoning district. The applicant is proposing to utilize 1,446 square feet of the first floor of their home to include the kitchen, living room, dining room, one full bathroom, the guest bedroom, and finished double garage and fenced-in backyard. The applicant has stated that they will be utilizing the double car garage for the business, the kitchen for all meals and snacks, and one full bathroom throughout the day and night, as well as the guest bedroom for overnight stays. The expanded use for five to 12 children is subject to the city's supplemental use standards in Section 31-70118 of the UDO. The existing operation, as licensed through the Virginia Department of Social Services, allows the use to operate from 6:00 AM to 5:59 AM daily. The expanded use for the family day home will be permitted to operate only from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM daily, when more than four children are being kept. Should this use permit be approved, nothing shall prevent them from keeping no more than four children overnight. Section 31-701 of the Unified Development Ordinance provides supplemental standards for a family day home with five to children. Family day homes are required to have 50 square feet of space if furniture and equipment is included. The daycare will utilize 1,446 square feet of the first floor, which is adequate space for the requested maximum of 12 children. The age range of the 12 children is six weeks to 12 years old. The applicant will have one additional employee to help care for the children and will have to comply with the child-to-staff ratios established by the Commonwealth of Virginia. In addition to the two parking spaces required for the residential use, the proposed use will need one parking space for the family day home plus one parking space for the employee. Therefore, the required minimum parking is four spaces. The site currently has four off-street parking spaces available, therefore there is adequate parking available. Lastly, the home has a six-foot-tall privacy fence bordering the approximately 4,160-square-foot backyard, which meets the required minimum of 1,000 square feet of outdoor play area for family day homes. The use of the outdoor area will be limited to the hours of 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM in accordance with the supplemental use standards, and should have little to no impact on the surrounding neighbors. Staff finds that the proposed use meets the criteria for conditional use permits as set forth in Section 31-306 of the Unified Development Ordinance, and that the use would not negatively impact the surrounding area. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of CUP 2022-016 with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. We'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this request?
She wants to not speak, Mr. Chairperson.
Thank you, Officer Jackson. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or a motion?
Mr. Chair.
CUP 2022-016.
There's a motion for, with the conditions, from Commissioner Hicks. Then second from Commissioner Goodman.
We don't have the caller vote, I'm on.
Back on electronic voting. So, Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
The motion for this has been approved for Dees Little Dean Daycare, and will go to City Council on September 21st. Congratulations. The next item on our agenda is subdivision variance request SBV 2022-00002, 611 and 711 Factory Street. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. This is subdivision variance request SBV 2022-002, 611 and 711 Factory Street, submitted by Efren Goodman, applicant on behalf of Goodman Developers, Inc., and Goodman Square, LLC, property owners, in accordance with Sections 31612F and 31612C3 and Table 612-2 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a variance from the connectivity requirements as well as the maximum cul-de-sac length standards for the RU Residential Urban District. The property is located at 611 and 711 Factory Street, zoning map 35H3, parcels X14, X*14A, and X17. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Whaleyville Voting Borough, zoned B2, general commercial zoning district, and RU Residential Urban Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, Core Support Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to subdivision variance request SBV 2022-002. Staff Planner Amy Boquilla will present staff's report.
Good afternoon. This is a subdivision variance request for property located along Factory Street, south of the downtown core, which is part of the Core Support Use District. The subject properties may look familiar. They were rezoned back in February of 2020 to change the former M2 heavy industrial zoning to a combination of B2 commercial along the front and RU Residential Urban zoning along the rear, which is the zoning that you currently see above. The rezoning included two proffers. The first stated that no more than 23 single-family detached homes would be constructed on the two properties in the rear, and the other proffer stated that no more than 17,000 square feet of commercial space would be constructed on the front parcel. Over the past two years, the developer has worked diligently on designing several different layouts for this development, and those efforts have led to the realization that a subdivision variance was more than likely needed. In particular, the variance requests were leafed from two standards, the first being our connectivity ratio requirement for all subdivisions, and the second variance request pertains to the maximum cul-de-sac length standards for the RU zoning district. This is the conceptual layout that was provided by the applicant. It shows one road end and two cul-de-sacs that would serve 20 single-family dwellings. So they're not quite intending to yield the 23 units originally envisioned. Section 31-612F, connectivity and secondary access, requires a minimum connectivity ratio of 1.4 for subdivisions, and on this diagram, I've added some notes to illustrate that they are requesting a connectivity ratio of one rather than 1.4 when you measure the lengths, which are the red sections divided by the blue sections. Additionally, Section 31-612C3 of the UDO requires a maximum cul-de-sac length per zoning district. It varies by which zoning district the development is taking place in. And the maximum cul-de-sac length for the RU district is 300 feet, with the intent of having smaller blocks in an urban district. However, the applicant desires to have a cul-de-sac in each direction of roughly 600 feet in length. The intent of the street improvement standards in our UDO is to ensure that streets will function in an independent manner, to provide adequate access for emergency and service vehicles, and to enhance non-vehicular travel, such as pedestrians and bicycles. They're also intended to provide continuous and comprehensive traffic routes. In cases of unusual situations, or when strict adherence to the regulations would result in practical difficulties or hardship, City Council, upon a recommendation from Planning Commission, may authorize a variance. Staff has analyzed the criteria for granting variances, and we concur with the applicant that a variance is warranted in this situation. Criteria one states that the granting of the variance or exception will not be a detriment to public safety, health, or welfare. The approval of this variance is not expected to create a negative impact on public safety, as there's only 20 single-family homes proposed here. The Departments of Public Works Traffic Engineering, as well as our Fire Department, express no objections to this request. Fire code requires two safe access routes when there are greater than 30 units. In this case, there are 20, so this would not be in conflict with fire code. The second criteria states that the conditions upon which the requests are based have to be unique to the property and not applicable generally to other properties. This site is adjacent to the CSX Railroad here to the west, and established single-family homes along Pleasant Street to the south, and then several industrial buildings zoned M2 to the north, such that access on three out of the four sides to the property is restricted or limited. Furthermore, the RU-zoned portion of this property is only about five acres in size, and so that typically will limit your ability to have an interconnected street system. Based on these factors, staff agrees that the conditions in which this variance is sought are unique to the property. Another criteria for granting the variance is that there has to be a particular physical limitation due to the shape of the site or topography, and as stated, the surrounding development patterns in the area, we feel, kind of create an impractical hardship to where if the variance were not granted, it may be infeasible to develop the property as desired. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the requested variance with two conditions that are noted in your staff report. If you have any questions regarding those, I'm happy to answer your questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amy. We'll now open the public hearing. Is anyone here to speak in favor of this request?
Leaving to the council right here before me. I am Pastor Moses Ware, Senior Pastor, Greater First Baptist Church Orlando. Adjacent to this property, we are located, if I'm looking correctly, would be MRM, adjacent to the property, and basically with this change right here, it will assist us as we come in and out of our sector of the church, where we are located, coming in, a greater traffic will be on Waikia Street. But basically, it would be better served because it's a little further down, so basically it does work for us to help and does aid more in safety from the sense of our community on the other side with houses and things of that nature. And that's what I'm approving for. Yes, please.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Is anyone to speak in opposition? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or a motion?
Mr. Hammond, I'd make a motion to approve subdivision variance request SBV 2022-002 with, I think, two conditions.
Motion for approval with Commissioner Steller. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hicks. Okay. Any discussion in the motion? Mr. Wyman, you get us ready for voting?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay. This request will go to City Council on September 21st, 2022, and congratulations to the proponents. The next item on our agenda is an ordinance text amendment, OTA 2022-004, and I think Mr. Wyman's going to handle this.
Yes, sir. I'll read the caption, then I'll, pardon me, I'm going to go get the clicker, so I can walk you through our PowerPoint. But this is ordinance text amendment, OTA 2022-004, initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the Code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Unified Development Ordinance, Article 4, Zoning, Section 31406, Use Regulations, Table 406-1, Principal Uses Permitted in Zoning District, and Article 6, Design and Improvement Standards, Section 31602, Design Standards. The purpose of the text amendment is to update and refine the Code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Unified Development Ordinance, due to a change in circumstance. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to ordinance text amendment, OTA 2022-004. So this is an ordinance...
Mr. Wyman, I'll open the public hearing, please.
What's that?
Opening the public hearing.
Open the public hearing?
I'm sorry, go ahead. I got ahead on myself.
I was like, great! So this is a change that has been discussed a couple times now with our Committee on Ordinances, the Subcommittee of the Planning Commission, and it does two things, I think. One, in my opinion, is much more impactful than the other, but first, this would allow multifamily development by right in the central business district. The central business district is the prominent zoning district in our downtown area. Most of the property is zoned CBD in the downtown area, aside from the residential neighborhoods around it, and it is a mixed-use zoning district. Right now, multifamily development, that is not specifically listed in our use table, so that essentially most multifamily development apartments require a conditional use permit. And that just does not necessarily align with the intent of the central business district. So that's the, that's the big change here. Secondly, this would allow for some flexibility to be utilized off-site for public parks in lieu of providing onsite open space amenities for these types of developments, and the one example recently that we have is the Suffolk News Herald building. Most of your downtown properties consume the entire footprint of the available parcel underneath it, making it difficult for a developer to provide some sort of particularly outside open space, there's just no land area to do it. And there is a tremendous amount of opportunities for open space downtown for, for developers to utilize. Additionally, in what we've seen, we have a handful of developers who are developing in the downtown area, they have multiple properties. So they have, on one of their properties, they may have some sort of fitness center or, you know, outdoor gazebo area for the residents that they want to ensure can be utilized by their residents in multiple buildings. So with this, provided that certain criteria can be met, we're allowing some flexibility to waive that requirement specifically for multifamily in downtown areas. So, let's see if this works. Am I too far away? Oh, there we go. Here we go. I think, I think we're on the right slide now. So these are the draft amendments, the amendment before you today, visualized. So a very quick and easy change on our use table, that is in Section 406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, that will change the C, which requires a conditional use permit for dwellings, multifamily, and apartment buildings, not otherwise enumerated. We would change that to a P, which represents that they would now be permitted by right, so no need for a conditional use permit. And the second part of this is just a little snippet from, from that section in our design standards, that's Section 31602, that requires that 200 square feet of open space or usable common area be provided per unit for multifamily structures, and we have offered this language, stating that private open space requirements for multifamily dwelling units in the CBD zoning district only may be waived by their director with documented proof that adequate amenities such as public parks, sidewalks, trails, or bikeways are within 1,000 feet of the development. And once again, we would not use this discretion lightly, there would have to be a very good case for it, and really, the developer would have to make a strong case that there's no opportunity to provide onsite open space. But this next slide here will visualize kind of our downtown area, this is out of our downtown plan, and you can see all those areas in green represent some form of open space. Additionally, we have some smaller areas that are labeled with letters that are some sort of public space, but within the downtown area, there are ample opportunities to enjoy the outdoors in a variety of ways, and as such, we recognize that, and within limited cases, would certainly be willing to waive those requirements if the developer cannot meet them onsite. So this just kind of visualizes some of, some of those opportunities in downtown. So with that being said, this comes with a recommendation of approval from the Committee on Ordinances, and additionally, staff recommends its approval.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. I would now open the public hearing for any additional comments. Hearing none. Are there any opposition? Hearing none again. We'll close the public hearings. Commissioners, motion? Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that ordinance text amendment, OTA 2022-004, be approved.
That's Commissioner Rector.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Hicks. Any discussion in the motion? Mr. Wyman, will you set us up for voting, please?
Yes, sir. Member. Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay. I want to thank the ordinance committee for their diligence and working on this, bringing this to us, and we can move forward. That completes our public hearings for today, and the next item on the agenda is other business, the minor subdivisions. I think Commissioner Rector has a motion?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move that the Planning Commission reconvene in a closed meeting for the purpose of pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711, parentheses A, parentheses 8, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel regarding legal issues related to the minor subdivision ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're now...
My second, I'm a second.
Sorry, second. We're now, we're going to need to vote on this first. Mr. Wyman's got us set up.
Commissioners, please vote. All right. Mr. Chairman, that motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay. We're now moved to the chambers for a closed meeting. I'd like to call the Commissioners back to order. Mr. Wyman, will you read the resolution?
Yes, sir. This is a resolution of certification of the closed meeting on August 16th, 2022 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended, whereas the Planning Commission of the City of Suffolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded votes, and in accordance with the provisions of the Freedom, or Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this committee that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now, therefore, be it resolved that the Planning Commission of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, are considered by the Planning Commission of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting. With that being said, at this point, it would be appropriate to have a motion approving this resolution.
Commissioners, we've heard the resolution. We had to have a motion to accept that.
Tell move.
Official.
Tell move.
Got a motion from Commissioner Hicks?
Second.
Second from, it's Creekmore. Set us up to vote, please.
All right. Mr. Chairman, that motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. Congratulations, Commissioners. I think it's proper to move to the next item on our agenda, which is old business. Do we have any old business?
I think we have any old business. One moment, let me get reacquainted. No, sir.
And we'll move to new business, and the status.
Yes, sir. So your last, our, the City Council meeting of July 20th, 22, has been, was quite a doozy as you all have experienced here recently, but the rezoning... So your last, our city council meeting of July 20th, 22, has been, it was quite a doozy as you all have experienced here recently, but the rezoning request, RZN 2021-002, this is Bob White Lane, as you may recall, that was tabled for 60 days at request of the applicant. So that will be going forward to City Council in an amended fashion. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-009, Wall Street Cafe, this was to establish a bar nightclub at 118 West Washington Street. That was approved with the conditions. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-011, Suffolk Christian Academy, that’s at 237 North Main Street to establish a school. That was approved with conditions. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-012, Blue Point Live Entertainment, this was to grant a conditional use permit to establish a bar nightclub on property located at 5941 Harborview Boulevard. This was tabled by City Council for 30 days and will go back before their consideration tomorrow evening. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-013, telecommunications fiber optics, POP site, this was to establish a utility facility not otherwise enumerated at 135 Hall Avenue. This was approved with the conditions.
We need to go back to the other business and have a motion to bring the text to us at a later date, next meeting?
We could. I think that’s a decision that could be discussed amongst the commission now if they would like that to come back.
Commissioner, do you want to, this text amendment for what started this whole hoopla, do we want to bring it back next month?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I’ll make a motion that we get on the, put on the agenda for next month’s meeting, the revision and changes to the minor subdivision ordinance.
Second from Commissioner Hicks. Discussion of the motion? Turn to legal counsel. Are we on track?
You see the vote?
Okay. Call for the vote.
Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, that motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
So to be up to date on the, our agenda, we’re going to bring that to us next month, and we’re going to move forward to Commissioners’ comments. Do you have any comments for Commissioners? Commissioner Hicks closing up her back. So if we have nothing else, Commissioners, this meeting is adjourned.